Six, two thousand and eighteen. It's the meeting of Northampton City Council. My name is Ryan O'Donnell. I'm the council president. I'll be presiding. Let me note the audio and video recording of these proceedings. And let me also announce we have something new for the city council. We have four assisted listening devices for those with hearing challenges. And if you need one, they can be requested of NCTV in the room beyond the door just behind you, which is an exciting development. So we thank NCTV and others who help make that happen. We'll begin with a period of public comment tonight. It's an opportunity for the public to speak on any issue you wish. We ask you only to keep to three minutes or less. And please remember it's your time to give your opinion to us. We don't engage in a back and forth. And the reason for both those things is to make sure everyone is heard fairly and receives equal time. I'll start with my list, which only has one person, and then we can open it up to others afterwards. So I'll ask Hannah Coyle to come up, if you would. And Ms. Coyle, if you would give your name and address for the record, please. Would you prefer to sit for this, or?
Oh, no.
Are you sure? All right.
Hannah Coyle, one eighty-seven, one eight-seven Main Street. I'm here tonight to talk about ending economic oppression of women and homelessness. Let's end economic oppression of women in this city. While higher wages and the living wage are becoming more prevalent in our city and communities, economic oppression of women who have not been hired with equal pay to the wages that meant have not been hired and do not have pay that is commensurate with men who earn wages every week, month, and annually. White women are viable catalysts of change in our homes, employment offices, and communities. Please hire women, white women, and all women, all people, all citizens in the community that would like to be hired. This gives each citizen, women and employees, economic strength and economic security for their wives, husbands, families, and into their retirement years. Child care, education, health care, and transportation cost money. A higher pay rate commensurate with our male coworkers will help end poverty and homelessness. Please hire women in need of employment. Equal pay for women and economic oppression, poverty, and gender bias, which has historically contributed to domestic discord and the oppression of women. I would also like to ask all businesses, all business owners of this city to consider contributing one to five percent of their economic earnings each month to help fund building new apartments and residential communities. This will be a viable economic strength of each business as we contribute to enacting and establishing lasting homes for each citizen in our communities who wishes to reside within. I also ask you to consider allotting a portion of that funding to people who live in rural areas, choose to live in the forest communities, and what we have thus far called the tent communities, and also people who have been living in their cars, who may prefer to reside in an apartment or a residential community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coyle. Thank you for those comments. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment tonight before we start? Hearing none, we'll convene, and I'll ask the role of the council to be called, please.
Counselor Bibb.
Here.
Counselor Carney.
President.
Counselor Dwight.
Here.
Here.
Counselor Barnes.
Counselor Murphy.
Counselor McLeary.
Counselor Matt.
Counselor Shaw.
Counselor Sherrill.
Here.
We have unanimous attendance. First, a quick announcement regarding executive session minutes. The open meeting law requires public bodies to regularly review minutes of executive session, determine if they may be disclosed. The executive session minutes of November sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen have been reviewed, has been determined that because of pending legal action, disclosure would defeat the lawful purpose of the executive session, so continued non-disclosure is warranted. Do other councilors have one-minute announcements? Counselor LaBarge.
Yes. I want to congratulate Linda Sabadosa. I want to congratulate Cho for winning their election. I also want to congratulate all the candidates who went out there and worked tirelessly of running for their positions. And the whole debates and everything was in due respect. So I just want to thank everybody. Secondly, I have another announcement. More and bigger illegal dumping on Sylvester Road. This has really become very, very serious. I have a resident who does running and biking, and last week they had found and collected in our watershed area a toilet bowl, a tank, and two tires that had been dumped on Sylvester Road near Chesterfield Road, where everybody runs and so forth. The next day, they encountered a huge amount of household debris right in the same place. A filthy sofa with springs and all its dirty cushions, a cooler, big garbage bags that looked like they were full of some kind of stuffing material, a child's chair for eating at a table, some kind of plastic bins. It just has gotten out of hand. I'm working with the mayor's office, plus the Department of Public Works, and whoever is doing this, you need to stop. But we are looking at putting up signage and also having the area being looked at.
Thank you very much. Are there other councilors? Counselor Sherrill.
I'd also like to take a moment and acknowledge the election that we had on Tuesday. I know we all look forward to being represented again in January and working with our new legislators, and we congratulate them. And I want to give a huge thank you to our city clerk and her office and all the election workers who had a really big, hot job with the very unusual nature of the election. And all of us here know to some extent what it means to put ourselves out there as a candidate, and I just want to express appreciation, admiration for all who stepped up to run and worked so hard during a hot summer. But I especially want to acknowledge our council president on a very fine campaign that was truly issues-driven and really elevated the conversation about policy that directly affects and is focused on our district. I thank him for his leadership in that conversation, and I'm grateful for his leadership here on the council, so very well done.
Thank you for those kind words. I really appreciate it. Thank you. Counselor Ward, too.
Yes. I'd like to announce that this Saturday, September eighth, from four to eight, the Northampton Community Rowing Organization is celebrating twenty years of rowing on the Connecticut River. And this will be held at the Lions Pavilion in Hatfield from four to eight this coming Saturday. It's a reunion of sorts for all the different families and rowers that have been involved through the years in Northampton High Rowing and the Masters Rowing Program. Thank you.
Any other councilors? No? Okay. Great. Mr. Mayor, you have a proclamation this evening. I understand.
Thank you very much. Good evening, councilors. I have a proclamation that I'd like to deliver tonight. It's actually requested by your colleague from Ward Seven, and I have a constituent of hers that I'll be presenting it to. It's entitled "Usher Syndrome Awareness Day," September fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Whereas Usher Syndrome is a relatively rare genetic disorder caused by a mutation in any one of ten genes resulting in a combination of hearing loss and visual impairment, and is a leading cause of combined deafness and blindness. And whereas more than four hundred thousand people are affected by this genetic disorder worldwide, with approximately fifty thousand of those living in the United States. And whereas Usher Syndrome, which is incurable presently, impacts three major senses in the body: vision. Vision loss is caused by a progressive vision disorder known as retinas pigmentosa, RP. RP causes the light-sensing cells in the retina to gradually deteriorate, initially resulting in night blindness, followed by a narrowing of the visual field, commonly known as tunnel vision. Hearing. Children with Usher Syndrome are born with or developing hearing loss. It is estimated that upward of ten percent of people with congenital, bilateral, sensoral, hearing loss have Usher Syndrome. And balance. Balance is achieved and maintained through input from your eyes, the vestibular organs in the inner ear, and the sensory systems of the body, such as the skin, muscles, and joints. Those with Usher Syndrome suffer from severe balance issues due to vestibular dysfunction. And whereas there are three clinical types, type one, type two, and type three, which are distinguished by the severity and age when the signs and symptoms appear, there are at least eleven different genetic types of Usher Syndrome as determined by the genes that are involved. One cannot determine the genetic type by clinical testing, as DNA testing is the only reliable way of determining the true genetic type. And whereas because of limited public awareness, those affected with Usher Syndrome may suffer with depression, anxiety, isolation, and loss of independence. And whereas on this day, we join with the Usher Syndrome community to spread public awareness about this condition, now therefore I, David Jane Arkowitz, Mayor of Northampton, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, as Usher Syndrome Awareness Day in the city of Northampton. In witness whereof, I've set my hand and imprinted the city seal the sixth day of September in the year two thousand and eighteen. And I wanted to present this to Star Adams and ask her to please say a few words about this.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Mayor Arkowitz and Court Klein, and my wonderful Ward Seven counselor, Alisa Klein, for expediting this and putting it together. I moved here from sunny South Florida some twenty-four years ago. When my son was five years old, we had discovered he was born deaf down in Florida, and I wanted him to learn to speak. So we came up here and enrolled him in Clark School for the Deaf, and we've been here ever since. And he was, he's been a very independent young man. The bottom fell out of my life when we found out at age twelve that he was losing his vision as well. And he already had lost his hearing. He had cochlear implants, but he was doing very well with those. So we started all over again. And he had enough vision that he could get his driver's license at age sixteen. He was a very proud driver for quite a few years. And then at age twenty-four, he had lost more than twenty percent of his peripheral vision. It's a type of vision loss where it closes in. It's a tunnel vision. So he's still like twenty-twenty in the center, but he's legally blind because he's lost his vision here and on the sides. And you know, when you go to the R and V and you've got that little blinky light test that you have to look into, he can't pass that anymore. So he's lost his driver's license. And so we put him on the waiting list for McDonald House over here on Old South Street. And three years we waited and were able to get him a nice little apartment, and it's right on the bike path. The bus stops right at the front door. It's wonderful. It's a wonderful location with someone with his afflictions. But he's become socially isolated, except for an occasional visit from mom and dad. We drive him around a lot. There's an organization called DBCAN, which is Deaf Blind Community Access Network out of Boston, that provides local people that take a special training to deal with deaf-blind people, and they will provide rides. It's paid for through the state, but not enough. Gas costs have been rising, along with insurance and so on, so we've lost a couple providers. So it's back to mom and dad and his older brother giving him rides mostly. I just, I'm so thrilled to be living in such a caring community where you all are willing to bring light to this affliction, as Mayor Arkowitz mentioned, four hundred thousand people around the world, and my son is one of the fifty thousand in the U.S. It's rare, but I'm hoping that with more attention placed on it, the third Saturday of each September, that maybe we can bring him some help and others like him. So I just, I'll end briefly with this quote from the Usher Syndrome Coalition website, which says, "Shine a light on Usher before the darkness takes our light." So thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate you sharing your story and the story of your son and spreading awareness on this important issue. Thank you. Anything else from the executive here? No? Okay. Well, we'll move to our consent agenda, which contains the following items, which I'll read at the request of any one councilor. They will be removed for a separate vote. First, approval of minutes of August sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Next, an application for second-hand dealer license for grapefruit at Five Market Street. Next, an application for a second-hand dealer license at Retro Genie. Is there a motion? Well, any removals? Okay. But a motion to approve? Second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any objections? So all those items are approved, and we will move now to the finance committee.
Thank you. I'll call a meeting to order and ask for the roll to be called.
Here.
Counselor Carney.
President.
Counselor Shaw. Here.
First item of business is approval of the minutes of the August sixteenth meeting. Do we have a motion?
Cho moved.
All right. Any changes or alterations to the minutes? No? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right, the first actual item on the agenda is eighteen-one-five-five, "An Order to Authorize Intermunicipal Agreements for the Greenfield Community College Use of the City's Fiber Network." Order that whereas Mass. General Law Section forty, subsection four A allows for joint operation of public activities among governmental units, and whereas Mass. General Law Chapter forty, section four A requires that such intergovernmental agreements be approved in a city by the city council and the mayor, and whereas the city of Northampton provides services to and shares services with other municipalities and entities, and whereas Greenfield Community College Nursing Program leases office space at Smith Vocational and Agricultural School, with the lease term extended through June twenty-two, and as such is using the city's fiber network. Therefore, pursuant to Mass. General Law Section forty, subsection four A, the city council hereby authorizes the city of Northampton to enter into an agreement with the Greenfield Community College to permit Greenfield Community College to use one fiber strand of the city's fiber network, which is supplied under separate agreement with the Five College Net, LCC, for an annual fee per the agreement for fiscal years two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-two. Do we have a motion of finance?
Motion.
Second.
Second. And the mayor's here to answer any questions.
So essentially, as you all know, the Greenfield Community College Nursing Program moved into the former Parks and Recreation Department building at Smith-Vogue. And in their first year of operation, because it was sort of a rushed move, they did a Comcast service line. And so now they want to actually procure their internet through the Five College Network, which is there right as one of the, as a college here in the valley. And we have access to that through our fiber network, but we have to have a municipal agreement between us allowing them to have the strand, to have access to that. So it's sort of a, and the terms of this agreement track the terms of the actual lease between Smith-Vogue and GCC. The actual costs are going to be very minimal. Our CIO, Mr. Begon, has estimated it's basically going to be about seven hundred and eighty dollars a year, which is just to cover maintenance and some other switches and related items. So it's fairly minimal. But obviously, we want to support this great program of having GCC in Hampshire County, and particularly having a nursing program at Smith-Vogue, so we're trying to facilitate this.
Oh, just a quick question. So is the agreement, it's intermunicipal, is it with the town of Greenfield or with?
No, it's with GCC, because there are, it's an intermunicipal, it's an inter-agency agreement.
Okay.
So anytime two governmental.
The city at all.
No, no, no. Anytime two governmental agencies, you may remember, we did one recently with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, that included UMass, actually, as part of the bike share program. So anytime any governmental agency, whether it's local, state, regional, you know, you are allowed to do these sorts of intermunicipal.
Just falls onto the intermunicipal section of law.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. Yeah.
Any other question? Oh, councilor.
Mayor, what is the annual fee?
As I said, the fee that we will be charging them, and it's really just to cover some of our maintenance costs, is seven hundred and eighty dollars a year.
Okay.
Yeah. That would be what would, that's the proposed contract that we have with them. Yep.
Any other questions from councilors? Hearing none. Then all in favor of a positive recommendation of finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
The next is eighteen-one-five-six, "An Order to Rescind Borrowing Authorizations for Rail Trail Access in the Mineral Hills Land Acquisition." Order that the city council rescinds the following orders because such borrowing authority is no longer necessary. Order seventeen-point-three-three-three, "A six-hundred-thousand-dollar borrowing authority authorized under the loan order approved on June fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen, for rail trail access to Look Memorial Park and from Leeds to Williamsburg to be rescinded as the city did not receive a grant from the Parklands Acquisition and Renovations for Communities Grant." And an order seventeen-three-three-two, "For two-hundred-thousand-dollar borrowing authority authorized under the loan order approved on June fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen, the acquisition of eight acres north of Route sixty-six in Mineral Hills, as the city did not receive a land self-help grant act." Do we have a motion to approve in finance?
Motion.
Second.
Second. And any questions from the mayor on this one?
Tonight will be a good tutorial for folks who wonder why we do these things, because we're coming to you now to ask you to rescind some borrowing authority grants. And then actually, we're going to ask you to give us borrowing authority, because we're applying for one of these grant programs. So this has become a fairly routine thing. We apply for either a park or a land grant, and as part of the application, we get the authorization from the city. Sometimes we get the grant, sometimes we don't get the grant, but as is always our pledge to you, we're not actually going to borrow the money. So that's why we want to rescind it, because it counts against our debt, essentially, when people look at what we have authorized for debt.
Any questions for the mayor on this one? Oh, councilor, please.
I know that the rail trail is being, is actually being paved, a portion of it, into Williamsburg, and so I'm wondering where that money's coming from if it's not related to this particular grant.
I'm fairly certain it came from another grant source. I would have to research that and let you know exactly which one. I know we got a couple of different other grants. We also worked with Williamsburg, so I can find out what that is. But it's clearly not these two. Yeah. But I'll, I can get you that answer.
And generally speaking, we have a pretty good record with getting some of these grants.
We do.
We get more than we don't.
I think we do. It's true, especially for land acquisition and park projects. It's obviously dependent on the competition and what other projects are out there around the state, but you know, we were, we.
If I hear no other questions, then all in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The next thing is eighteen-point-one-five-eight, "An Order to Apply Bond Premium to the Installation of Arcanum Field Play Structures." Order that the city appropriates five thousand thirteen dollars and forty cents, representing the aggregate remaining net premium paid to the city upon the sale of bonds issued on May first, two thousand and eighteen, to be used towards the installation of a new play structure at Arcanum Field. Such funds to be used in conjunction with the insurance proceeds and a gift to the city previously appropriated for the new play structure in June of two thousand and seventeen, including any costs incidental and related thereto, and reduced by any amount authorized to be borrowed, therefore, by like amount. And the mayor is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out such capital project. Do we have a motion of finance?
Second motion.
Second.
This is the one that was.
Yes. This is, some of you may remember that the play structure at Arcanum Field was a victim of arson and was burned. And so we have been going through a long process of going through the insurance settlement process, and then going through the bidding and design, and now we're getting to the construction phase of actually replacing it. There was an insurance settlement of a little under thirty thousand dollars. The Ray Ellerbrook Memorial Fund also contributed ten thousand dollars toward the structure, toward a new structure. And we went through the entire bidding costs, have actually acquired the play structure. It's actually at the DPW, and then we have to hire an actual construction firm to put it together, and it's vertical construction, so we had to actually go out to bid and do all kinds of stuff. Who knew putting a playground together would require all that? But we've come up a little short in the final budget. Again, we're thinking it's approximately five thousand dollars short, which is why we have this bond proceeds, which coincidentally is five thousand thirteen dollars and forty cents from our borrowing that occurred earlier this year. Typically, we generally apply these bond proceeds to a capital project, so it seemed like a perfect match. So we're basically asking you to appropriate this bond proceed to this project so that we can finally get the playground constructed at Arcanum Field. We've already selected, you know, the construction firm, and it's ready to go, and we just need to have the sufficient funding.
Counselor Dwight.
Were the, was anyone caught for this?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So there was no prosecution and no possible compensation?
Yeah. No, there was no, you know, there was an investigation, there were no witnesses, and again, I don't, we assume it's arson. We don't, we don't know.
Both didn't spontaneously.
That would be, yes, exactly. Yeah, no, I don't, I'm not aware of it, of any other thing.
Years, no lightning strikes.
Saucer landing.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's, so yeah, it remains unsolved, and, but obviously, our insurance company did compensate us for it, but obviously, given the age and condition of it, the settlement was a little less than what it takes to buy and install a new system, so, yep.
Counselor Klein.
This has been a frequent flyer, kind of, I get tons of emails from people because it's in Ward Seven, and lots and lots of families who live around there used to use the play structure regularly. So for the last two years, I've gotten lots of emails, you know, when is it happening? Why isn't it happening? So I'm really happy to see that this finally is moving through, and I'm just wondering if you can give us a little bit of a timeline so I can give people some definites about when they can actually start climbing on it again.
Yeah. As I said, we've signed, we're almost ready to sign the contract once we have the funding. Interestingly, we've hired Mountain View Landscaping and Construction, which built Plasky Park. They're the company that won the bid. We do, I think DPW needs to do a little bit of site prep work, which we're going to do, which actually, there's still some of the understructure of the old playground, which is underneath the bark mulch and everything. But our hope is to get it done this, you know, very quickly this fall. I can't, I can maybe give you a quicker timeline once we sign the contract, and then we have a meeting with the, with the construction folks, but I mean, literally, all the components are nearby at the cemetery, you know, our cemetery department at Spring Grove. They've all been delivered. It's all waiting. We just had to hire a firm to actually assemble it. So it should be a fairly straightforward process. So hopefully, by, when the leaves start turning and it's fall, that kids will be back on that playground. Kids watching baseball games and soccer games and things like that, so.
Any other questions for the mayor on this one? Hearing none, then all in favor of a positive recommendation of finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's see. The last one is eighteen-one-five-nine. It's "An Order to Authorize Borrowing and Grant Applications for Florence Recreational Fields." And this is eighteen-one-five-nine. "Order that whereas Florence Recreational Fields is a popular community-wide asset, and the Open Space and Recreation Multi-Use Plan two thousand and eighteen to twenty-five recommends improving parks and recreation areas and implementing the next phase of parks and recreation areas and implementing the next phase of Florence Recreation Fields. And whereas Florence Recreation Fields is dedicated to park and recreation purposes under Mass. General Law Section 45, subsection 3, and whereas this phase will complete the Florence Recreation Fields project and enhance the facility with additional play structures, field improvements, plantings, and accessible benches and a play area. And whereas the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs is offering reimbursable grants to cities and towns to support the preservation and restoration of urban parks through the Parkland Acquisitions and Renovations for Communities Grant Program. The park grant is a reimbursable program, which requires the city to demonstrate that it is all the funds necessary to improve the park properties prior to state reimbursement. And whereas the Florence Recreation Fields final phase will cost an estimated $625,000, therefore, may it be ordered that the city council appropriates and authorizes the city treasurer with the approval of the mayor to borrow $625,000 over 15 years under Mass. General Law Section 44B, subsection 11, and Mass. General Law Section 44, subsection 8C, or any other enabling authority for the purpose of improvement of public parks and playgrounds on said property, and the mayor be authorized to file on behalf of the City of Northampton any and all applications deemed necessary for grants and/or reimbursements from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs and/or any other, others in any way connected with the scope of this article, and to take other such actions as are necessary to carry out the terms, purposes, and conditions of this grant, and the Northampton Parks and Recreation Department and/or Parks and Recreation Commission be authorized to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary on behalf of the City of Northampton. And that the mayor be and is hereby authorized to take such other actions as are necessary to carry out the terms, purposes, and conditions of this grant to be administered by the Parks and Recreation Department. Do we have a motion?
Take a motion.
Second.
Second.
Any questions for the mayor on this one?
This is, again, sort of the reverse of the procedure that you've done earlier. The Parks Director likes to joke that it's Phase 72 of this project, because it seems like there's been so many phases of it. But, but it's, you know, this has been one of our most successful and popular recreational areas in the city, and if you go by there on any given day, there's, you know, half dozen or so different games going on from different leagues. There's people using the walking trails, there's families playing at the playgrounds. And over the course of the time that it's been open, other outstanding needs and suggested improvements have been recommended. So the goal of this final phase of the project is to try to, is to try to meet those. Included in this phase would be additional shade trees, the final playground pieces, including a young child play structure. It would add an accessible poured-in-place rubber play area, safety nettings for the baseball fields. Had a few broken windshields up there, because, you know, some fly balls flying around in the parking lot's quite close. It will also include fencing in the baseball dugout areas, solar-powered scoreboards, accessible benches, recycling containers, and additional historical and other signage. So those are some of the things that will be part of the park grant application that we'll be putting forward. And this just, again, as it says in the, in the order itself, we have to demonstrate that we're committed to the project and that we have the funds to then be reimbursed. But obviously, we will not, we will not seek the actual borrowing.
Questions for the mayor on this one? Everybody good with, it's been a very successful project. Hearing none, then all in favor of a positive recommendation of finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I know of no other new business for us to discuss tonight, so a motion to return would be in order. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hey, we're back in city council, so let's take on some of these financial orders. The first is 18.155, an order to authorize an agreement for Greenfield Community College to use the city's fiber network.
First reading?
First and second. Is there a discussion on this? I think this is a great common sense idea. So I'll ask for a roll call.
Counselor Carr.
Yes.
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 The order is approved. Next, 18.156, an order to rescind borrowing authorizations for rail trail access in Mineral Hills land acquisitions. Is there a motion on this?
Approval and first reading?
Second. Any discussion on rescinding of borrowing authority? If not, can we have a roll call?
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor DeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Donald.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
The order is approved as well. Now we come to 18.158, an order to apply bond premium to installation of Arcanum Field play structure.
Second.
Any discussion on this order? Can we have a roll of the council, please?
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor DeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Donald.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Goodwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carr.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor DeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Donald.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Goodwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carr.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Donald.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Goodwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carr.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor DeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Donald.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Goodwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carr.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Donald.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Goodwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carr.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor DeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Donald.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Goodwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carr.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor DeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Finally, to wrap up our contentious city council meeting tonight, is 18.145, an order to name the vehicle entranceway to Northampton City Hall, Mayor Sean Dunphy Way. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. May and second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Donald.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Goodwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carr.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor DeBarge.
Yes.
And Counselor Murphy.
Yes. Did we skip something?
I don't rise to make it contentious. I just, I wanted to, at the last meeting about this order, Councillor Goodwell had asked me, will there be a ceremony of some kind about this order that you just adopted? Now that it is adopted, I will say that we are planning to do an actual unveiling of the sign on Saturday, September 29th, at 10:30, and I'll put out more information about it. And Mayor Dunphy's wife, Ann, and daughters and five grandchildren are all scheduled to be here for the unveiling. So I just wanted to give councilors a heads up that it's no, it's not a top secret thing anymore, so.
That's great.
Yeah. So I'll put some further announcements once we get closer. Thanks.
Look forward to that. Thank you very much.
See you.
No information requests today? No new business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Any opposed to adjournment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Second.